Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 1,195th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on requests for preliminary platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use or a site plan and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. All resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Denaro.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Is here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our planning staff. For the folks in our audience that haven't been to one of our meetings before, the general format is that we will call each of the items that is on our agenda tonight. Our planning staff will give background information on the item. We will then go to the petitioner to speak to the item. We may have questions for them and find out additional information. And then there will be an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against these items to come forward at that time. With that, we are going to start with our pending items section of our agenda. These are items that we have heard previously at other meetings, and we will start with item number one.
Petition 2022-12-01-02 submitted by Basilica of St. Mary under sections 13.13 and 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance as amended, requesting to rezone the properties at 18100 Merriman Road and 30600 Brookview Drive located on the east side of Merriman Road between Mayville and Seven Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 11 from public lands to NM3 Neighborhood Family, Multifamily, maximum four stories.
This item was tabled at our previous meeting and was tabled to this meeting, so is there a motion to remove this item from the table?
So moved.
Supported by...
Support.
I heard, I believe, Mr. Ventura first. So we will go with Mr. Long and Mr. Ventura to untable this. If there is no objection, I think we can safely show five to, or excuse me, six to untable this. I see no objections from anyone, so this item has been removed from the table, so now we can discuss this. Mr. Toramina, I believe there is an update, some new information on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe you received correspondence from the petitioner requesting that this item be tabled to the May 9th regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
Okay, so our petitioner has requested that this item be put back on the table until May 9th, 2023, and anytime we receive these requests, we honor the petitioner's request. It gives them additional time to research and prepare for that meeting. If there is no other discussion from any of our commissioners, any of our commissioners have any questions or discussion? If not, a motion to put this item back on the table to May 9th would be appropriate at this time.
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by...
Support.
Mr. Bonjero. This is a motion by Mr. Long and Bonjero to table the item. There is no discussion on tabling motions, and this is to May 9th, 2023. If there is no, well, there is no discussion, so if the secretary can call the roll on that.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mrs. Denaro.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye. Motion passes. Item has been tabled to May 9th of 2023. We now move on to the public hearing section of our agenda, item number two.
Petition 2023-01-02-01 submitted by Alleviate Acupuncture Wellness Clinic requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.37 of the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance as amended to operate a massage establishment at 33300 Five Mile Road, Suite 105, located on the northwest, northeast corner of Five Mile Road and Farmington in the southwest quarter of Section 15.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The location of this request is the Civic Center Office Plaza, which, as was indicated, is at the northeast corner of Five Mile and Farmington Roads. This is an office building that is about 35,000 square feet in size, sits on land roughly 3.13 acres, with frontage on both Five Mile and Farmington Roads. This is a two-story structure. Most of the parking is located between the building and Five Mile and Farmington Roads. Directly adjacent to the site is the city-owned Veterans Memorial Park. The site is Zone C1, which treats massage establishments as a waiver use under Section 6.37 of the zoning ordinance. Alleviate Acupuncture Wellness Clinic currently occupies one of the suites, which is on the first floor of the building. The suite is roughly 2,350 square feet in size. The principal use of the business currently is acupuncture. Expanding the use to include massage therapy does require approval of a waiver. The plans submitted with the application show the general layout of the space, showing the lobby and reception area, several individual treatment rooms, as well as offices and a restroom. No modifications to the building are proposed. The zoning ordinance does limit the hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There are two special separation requirements that are part of the code. One is that a massage establishment not be located within 400 feet of an existing massage establishment. There are no other establishments within 400 feet of this proposed location, so it complies with that special requirement. And then, secondly, a 400-foot separation requirement from any school, place of worship, daycare facility, public library, playground, or park. As I indicated earlier, Veterans Memorial Park is located immediately adjacent to this site, so that will require that the separation distance be waived by City Council with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Parking is adequate for the site. And, Mr. Chairman, if you wish, I can read out the correspondence now.
Yes, please.
And I'll just summarize these quickly. We have actually six letters from departments, including engineering, fire, the police, traffic bureau, Department of Inspection, accounting or finance, as well as the treasures, all indicating that they have no objections to the proposal as submitted. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? If there's no questions for our planning staff, I believe our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium. Last, you start with your name and address for our record.
Yes, my name is Ruth Lehman, and I'm the owner-operator of Alleviate Acupuncture. I have a doctorate in acupuncture and Chinese medicine.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. And what else would you like to tell us about your business?
Well, most of my patients actually are used to an integrative medicine perspective, utilizing chiropractic massage and acupuncture, and so they're looking forward to having additional options at my practice. Acupuncture and massage work synergistically to increase the effect, effective result, alleviating pain, decreasing stress. And so it's just adding, it's kind of flushing out or supplementing the overall experience for my patients.
Okay, thank you. And is there any questions from any of our fellow commissioners for Mrs. Lehman? Mr. Ventura.
Ms. Lehman, thank you for coming here tonight. You are really an acupuncture practice, and so this is going to supplement what you do.
Yes.
Is that correct? So you're not primarily going to be a massage.
Exactly.
And the kind of massage that you're doing here differs from what you might think of as a massage parlor, if you will, in that it's therapeutic in nature.
Of course.
Mr. Toramina talked about the hours that are, that the ordinance allows you to operate. What hours do you plan on operating?
Definitely within those hours. We're actually open from 10 to 2, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Mondays and Wednesdays. Tuesday evenings, I'm open from 4 to 8. Thursdays, we're open a little bit earlier. We start at 8:00 a.m. and we go until 2:00 p.m. And then Saturdays, we're open from 9 until 1. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
Pete took my question with the hours and days. My question would be, how long have you been in business?
Sure.
And where have you been located?
Right, so I actually moved to Michigan five years ago. I previously worked as a nurse, and then I worked as an acupuncturist at a healthcare facility in Wisconsin. I've been an acupuncturist for five years. When I moved to Michigan, I worked for Henry Ford Health System as an acupuncturist within their Center for Integrative Wellness. I just opened my practice here in Livonia in August of this past year, 2022, and I'm very happy to be here. However, my patients are missing the integrative approach and wishing me to bring the complement of services to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? I see no other questions from any of our commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? I don't see anybody jumping up for that. Ms. Lehman, is there anything else that you would like to say before we make our decision?
No, thank you. Just thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm very happy to be here.
Well, thank you, and we'll get your item resolved here shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. If there's no further questions of our petitioner, I can say that our public hearing has been closed, and a motion would be in order. Chairman. Mr. Ventura.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. At the request to operate a massage establishment at 33300 Five Mile Road, Suite 105, is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, the use of massage, a massage establishment at this location is allowed, provided that the City Council waives the requirement under Section 6.37.3 that no massage establishment be located within 400 feet of a park. Number two, this waiver is limited to Alleviate Acupuncture Wellness Clinic and shall only be transferred to another user after first obtaining City Council approval. Number three, the petitioner shall comply with all of the special waiver use standards and requirements as outlined in Section 6.37 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 5.49 of the Law Code of Ordinances. And four, the petitioner shall not engage in any form of solicitation for business within the public right-of-way of Farmington and Five Mile Roads.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Long, to approve this item. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion on the motion, if the secretary could please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. Denaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. We wish you good luck with your expanded business. Thank you. And with that item being done, we'll now move on to item number three on our agenda.
Petition 2023-01-06-01 submitted by the City of Livonia Planning Commission on its own motion under Sections 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 Ordinance as amended and under Public Act 110 of 2006 Michigan Zoning Enabling Act as amended to consider multiple revisions to the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance to correct certain defects, add and delete provisions, and provide clarification to others.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. This item involves changes to the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance. The amendments would affect 39 sections of the code, many of which are minor and will have little or no impact other than to provide clarity and consistency. The more substantive changes include the following, and I'll read these off one by one. First is classifying banquet facilities as a use similar to dance halls and ballrooms, defining what constitutes a banquet facility based on building occupancy, and then establishing standards that will treat them as a waiver use in the C2 zoning district. Next, making a distinction between steel fabricators and special trade contractors versus truck terminals, truck and trailer rental, or storage facilities, and vehicle tow yards. Currently, these six uses are lumped together under one land use category and treated strictly as waiver uses in the M1 and the M2 manufacturing districts. The change would split them into two groups, with steel fabricators and special trade contractors as a separate group, and treating them as a use permitted by right in the M2 district. Next, adding the open space preservation option as a permitted use in RUF districts. This special zoning provision previously existed in ordinance number 543 and is something that the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires local government units to have in their zoning ordinances. The open space preservation option regulations are being added to Section 5.03. Any project or development proposed under this option would be subject to site plan review. Fourth, adding apartments as a waiver to the NM1 Neighborhood Multifamily District. This change would correct an oversight when the new ordinance was adopted. You'll recall that the residential condominium, the R62 Family District, and the R7 Multifamily District that were all part of the old ordinance were consolidated into the NM1 District. Of the city's 17 non-age-restricted apartment complexes, 15 were zoned R7, and unfortunately, the NM1 District regulations do not include apartments, making them all non-conforming. To fix this, apartments would be added to Section 3.07 as a waiver use. Number five, eliminating the exception to the minimum residential lot depth standard. Footnote B in the Schedule of Regulations currently allows the city to reduce the depth of single-family lots where immovable physical boundary limitations exist. This language has existed for years and has not been applied consistently. Recent litigation involving a lot split in which the plaintiff successfully used footnote B as leverage against the city is why the law department is now recommending that it be removed from the zoning ordinance. Number six, enacting a size limit on stores that are allowed to sell packaged spirit products via the specially designated distributor license, or SDD. The limit would be 15,000 square feet and would codify what has been a longstanding practice of the city to restrict SDD licenses to smaller retail stores instead of big-box or large-format businesses. Number seven, preventing alcohol sales at gasoline service stations. This is another longstanding practice of the city. Eight, providing construction standards for masonry screen walls, which are often required between residential and non-residential zoning districts. Number nine, requiring City Council approval to waive the hard-surfacing requirements for parking areas. Ten, adopting several changes to the sign regulations, including modifying the definition of mural and stipulating that council's approval is required to paint or add a mural to any building or structure. Next, adding and adjusting the standards for order and pre-order menu boards for restaurants with drive-through facilities. Increasing the area number of awning, canopy, or wall signs allowed in the city's, excuse me, commercial and industrial zoning districts. And specifying that a temporary sign must be placed outside of any easement, public right-of-way, or common area used for vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And I'll note that this was one of the changes recommended by the Planning Commission at our study session, so that that language has been modified. It was previously shown to be 10 feet, and we've changed it to just be outside of any public right-of-way. Eleven, adding language that would give the City Council the authority to limit the approval of a waiver to a specific user. Currently, this language is added to resolutions on a case-by-case basis, but has yet to have a foundation in the ordinance which this would provide. And a most recent example was the case just prior to this where you put that restriction on Alleviate Acupuncture. Twelve, clarifying the rights of the building official concerning enforcing the ordinance and charging and seeking penalties against violators. This evening, I'd like the Planning Commission to consider one more change not previously discussed. It would add drive-up window facilities for uses other than restaurants as a waiver use in the C1 and C2 districts and as a permitted use in the C3 district. The ordinance does not currently have rules that apply in these situations. A good example would be a pharmacy, a drive-up operation, and this is something that we've reviewed in the past and was in the previous ordinance, but somehow escaped being put back in Livonia Vision 21 when it was adopted. So in staff's opinion, the requested changes will result in a better zoning ordinance, one that helps achieve the overall goals and objectives of the Livonia Vision Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And I think it's important for anyone who's watching this and wondering exactly what's going on, because there's a lot of moving parts in this petition, which is offered directly by the city, is the petitioner on this, is several, you know, in the past couple of years, we completely rewrote the zoning ordinance from scratch, basically, and came up with a whole new, much easier-to-use, and simplified, manageable zoning ordinance. But in the process of doing that, there's going to be things that get missed, or typos, or things that needed to be added along the way. So we went through this process some time ago and did a revision of a number of items and approved that. You're now going back, and you've collected more items that you found that needed to be updated and are now presenting that to us again. And we discussed this in length at our study meeting, each of these items, because there's a lot of little, little details, and walked through those so that we understood what they were. And now we have an opportunity here at this meeting to ask any additional questions, get some input from any of our residents who may have any questions, and then make this second revision to the zoning ordinance. And this is going to continue to happen periodically as a living document, so it's a lot of work goes into these things. It was very quickly summarized by Mr. Toramina, I appreciate that, but the reality is a lot of work goes into, to doing this, so I do appreciate all the, all the effort that goes into this. With that, I will see, because we are the petitioner for this item, I'm going to see, I'll go directly to the commissioners and see if there's any questions or comments from any of our commissioners. For Mr. Toramina. Mrs. Denaro.
Mark, did we get any public comments or feedback on this?
We, I received one email correspondence, and we responded to that, and I believe I copied the Planning Commission on that item, so.
Nothing in addition to that?
Nothing, no.
Great.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions for our planning staff, from any of our commissioners? Any of these items? Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Wolschow, not a question, Mr. Toramina, but I want to compliment you and the Planning Commission staff on really doing an outstanding job of combing through this and having kept all the records of the places that this thing needed to be adjusted to meet the needs of the city and to make sense and to take out the conflicts, and I think you've done an outstanding job. I just want to thank you and compliment you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions or comments from any of our commissioners? If not, is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? If so, feel free to come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good to see you guys and ladies. My name is Mike Colleton, 31193 Bobber Street, Livonia, Michigan. By the way, thank you guys for what you do. Many people are at home with their families right now, seeing their kids play hockey or whatever. You guys are here, so thank you. I mean that greatly. I'm here to remind you guys of your great and awesome duties that you have to serve the citizens of our city, and I thank you very much for that city. So I look back all the meetings. I'll be traveling for some time, so this is my last meeting, I'll be able to attend for a while. I look at what you guys talk about, look what you do, I look at the visions that you plan, and this Vision 21 is extremely important to our city. It's the basics of what we're going to, going forward. So the obligations that you have are great. As a matter of fact, in 1926, the landmark case, the City of Euclid versus Ambler, states that zoning boards not only are critical, they have an obligation to the citizens to uphold and protect the property values of the citizens. In 1926, Euclid versus Ambler, it states that you have an obligation to protect the property values of your citizens. So thank you for that, that's number one. In that constitutional landmark case, it said the argument in favor of zoning laws is that they help preserve the character of a community. Without these laws, the rezoning goes, you'd have brothels next to schools and lumberbills or apartment buildings next to residential neighborhoods. Proponents also argue these laws help maintain property values and stabilize them, if not grow them. The argument is then, when a government enacts a zoning ordinance, it is effect depriving property owner of a right, but it's protecting the citizens who are there. So I'd like you to remember this going forward, and please, thank you again for what you do. What you guys are going to do tonight and in the future, like May 9th in the future, is going to make a big difference to our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colleton, for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Is there, again, I'll go back to my commissioners, is there anyone on the commission wishing to make any comments or ask any additional questions? If not, I think I can close the public hearing on this item, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution pursuant to a public hearing having been held by the City Planning Commission on February 14th, 2023, on petition 2023-01-06-01 submitted by the City of Livonia Planning Commission on its own motion under Section 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance as amended, and in accordance with Public Act 110 of 2006, known as the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, to consider multiple revisions to the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance in order to correct certain defects, add and delete provisions, and provide clarification to others. The Planning Commission does hereby recommend to the City Council that the petition 2023-01-06-01 be approved for the following reasons. Number one, that the proposed language amendments are needed to correct certain errors and omissions that were overlooked with the adoption of the original Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance. Number two, that the proposed amendments add and delete certain provisions in a way that will serve to improve the effectiveness of the city's land use regulations. Number three, that the proposed amendments will serve to further the implementation of the goals and objectives of the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan and are in the best interests of the community as a whole. And number four, that the proposed amendments to, that the proposed amendments to are in full compliance with the requirements of the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended.
Is there support?
Support.
I heard Mr. Bonjero first, so we'll say Mr. Long and Mr. Bonjero on that motion. I want to just ask a question of the maker of the motion. I assume that you're also intending on including the language about drive-ups of non-
Inclusive of the language that was added today regarding drive-in windows for non-restaurants.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we include that.
Absolutely.
So it's very clear. Okay, thank you, and the maker, or the supporter, I'm sure is okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. And there is one person in the audience who's standing there. I don't, normally, this is not time for a public comment, but I will give you an opportunity if you would like to just briefly ask a question.
I know I was a little bit late, I'm sorry. My name is Ellen Kuzing, and I'm at 31098 Bobber Street, and I understand I was late. I didn't expect this to come up quite as quickly. But I guess my concern, and my question for you is, and you may have already addressed this, but why are these being addressed now?
Actually...
These actual things. Some of these, when I was looking at what's being proposed, it just seems like we're opening ourselves up for... maybe some non-regulation going on and not really having control over what's going to be happening in Livonia on some of these. And I guess I'm just curious, like, when did these decide to come up? Because this, this like appeared, and as far as I know, it appeared after the meeting two weeks ago. And so it kind of just makes me wonder, and as a longtime resident of Livonia, I guess I would like a little more backdrop history about this.
Sure. And you, unfortunately, you did miss probably my opening speech, which is, so hopefully I'll, I'll sort of go through it again quickly, just in hope it answers some of your question.
Okay.
Our zoning ordinance was, we, we've had since the inception of the city. A year or so ago, we went through a process of, a couple of years ago probably now, a, a very lengthy process of completely rewriting our rezoning ordinance, our zoning ordinance to a whole new format and language. And as part of that, when you're doing a major rewrite of something, things are going to get missed. And so as that new zoning ordinance was implemented and things were discovered that either were missed, need to be added, clarified, tweaked, typos, any of those types of things, those were collected and they're brought to us in a large package of revisions that we did some time ago. We did a revision quite a while back to correct a bunch of those things. And then, again, we've now gone through a second iteration of, of corrections and additions and changes that our planning staff and other city attorney and other people within the city have noted need to be fixed. And this is now a package, a second revision that's being brought to us, that's been collected over a period of time to make these edits. And there's many, many, many edits in this proposal tonight. So the, the timing is not specific to any other event that's occurring in the city. It's just, this is the time that this, this was bundled together and brought to us. Mr. Toramina, is there anything else that I'm missing?
I can assure this resident that these changes have been in the works for a year, exactly, because it was shortly after the adoption of the changes, the same time last year that we were already finding modifications that needed to be made in a second round of amendments, which is why we're here today.
And it's likely there's going to be a third and a fourth at some point in the future, so. So this is just sort of a housekeeping item, really. But if there's anything in specific about the, any of these changes that you have a question about or concern about?
No, actually, I thought I was going to hear you go down the list this, this evening, and then I could take it in, understand it, because I was trying to come here to understand all these changes a little bit better. It is quite lengthy.
Yes.
And I was really hoping that I would hear that.
Okay.
So obviously, that's not the case.
Yeah, that's the-
I, I really thought we'd be going through, boom, this, this, this resolution, this one, this one.
Yeah, we don't line item it. It's, it's more of a, a package approval that we're making tonight. Now, there is, this is going to go to City Council if it's approved tonight, and they'll have to also have a public hearing, and there'll be an opportunity for public comments as well there. So if, in between now and then, you have an opportunity. We're only making recommendations at the planning commission, so they will ultimately make this language change if they, if they choose to. So you have an opportunity to still do additional research and formulate questions and ask at the City Council level as well, so.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Again, we do have a motion on the floor to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Bonjero. If there's no comments on the motion, a roll would be in order.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Ms. De Naro.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Care Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. That completes the public hearing section of our agenda. We now move on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda.
That is the approval of the minutes of the one-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-third public hearing and regular meeting held by the planning commission on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, and on that one, there was three members absent, Ms. De Naro, Mr. Bonjero, and Mr. Ventura. Is there a motion to approve?
Can we do that with so many?
Well, we have-
Three, so we're two, we need two votes to-
Well, we really don't have a choice at this point, because we've lost-
I know we don't have a seventh, so I didn't know if we'd have to wait until we had a seventh. I guess that wouldn't work, because-
They wouldn't have been present, so.
My, I stand down with my questioning, and I'll move, and I'll move approval of the minutes.
Well, this does raise kind of a sticky wicket, so to speak. It is, I've often wondered from a-
Parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian perspective, does, does a member who is absent, are they truly precluded from voting on the minutes of a meeting or not? And that is a question I have not researched.
I'm not facing myself a parliamentarian, and I would have to go reference Robert's Rules of Order.
Right.
So, or consult with the law, law department. So if you want to, if you want to pass this for another meeting, that's fine, otherwise, I don't have an answer.
Well, I think the, the worst thing that would happen would be that we would have to approve them again later. So why don't we go ahead and approve them? And if we find out that we jumped the gun, then we can bring it back at a future time. So again, I, I move approval of-
All right. I think that sounds fair. We'll have approval offered by Mr. Long, supported by-
Me.
Mr. Care Magna. Thank you, sir. And I think what we'll do for this point, because we do have an approval by Mr. Long and Mr. Care Magna, if there's no objections, we will show six approving this. And we'll double-check on the parliamentarian aspect of that and make sure that that's okay. If it's not, we will revisit this. If there's no objections, I see no objections. Otherwise, we're going to be stuck forever on this. We have one last item on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
That's the approval of the minutes of the one-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-fourth public hearing and regular meeting held by the planning commission on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
And is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
We have Mr. Bonjero and Ms. De Naro on that item. Is there any comments? If there's no objection, I think we'll show six on approving that. And that will take us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening? I hear no other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Ventura, supported by?
Support that.
Mr. Bonjero. That is a motion to adjourn. Again, I believe if there's no objection, I can safely say that we can show six on that. I see no objection from any of our commissioners, so the meeting will be adjourned this evening at seven thirty-eight p.m. I would like to thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution in bringing this meeting to our community. And with that, I would like to offer a good night to the community and a good night, Livonia.